So I'll call it, call to order the February 13th, Deschutes County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Welcome all of you here today. Thanks for coming. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the next order of business on our agenda is citizen input, and we have had several requests today to make comment. If you're interested in making comment, there's blue forms over on that table. If you can sign that, we've got several to go first, or three, I guess, so if anybody else wants to do it. And then you give the blue form to Sharon over here. But, so our first citizen input is from Jan Olson. And if you just state your name for the record, and welcome.
My name is Jan Olson, Tumalo resident. I'm here to discuss with you guys industrial hemp production in the rural county. Since 2015, Oregon has allowed industrial hemp production. For the most part, the impression given to the prior council was that it was untouchable. However, only EFU parcels in the state are given outright ability to farm hemp. The county has the ability to regulate EFU, I mean, MUA and RR parcels, the same way you do marijuana. Only the EFU parcels are excluded from that process. Now, Tammy Bany, when she made the statement that hemp is untouchable, perhaps didn't do the due diligence. We had a different agenda at that point. We wanted to bring as many acres under development as possible to legitimize the program to take it on a national level. However, it was never the intention for everybody with two or three acres to put it out there. The citizen impact, the water, the lifestyle are all impacted 100 times worse than marijuana. You know, you've had the ability for the past four years to do something. For whatever reason, it wasn't pushed as an agenda item, but now I'm asking as a Tumalo resident, as a business owner, for you guys to look at the situation and perhaps put some guide rails in place. This is not anti-competition statement. This has to do with the viability of the program long-term and the livability of lifestyle in Deschutes County. We're mostly concerned about the proliferation of pollen and non-professional entities basically operating. I would much rather see 10 to 15 large EFU parcels working than 200 cats running loose all over the county. It's something that you've had the ability to do, but for whatever reason, to this point, it hasn't moved forward. I have different agendas on EFU parcels. There's specific ownership details that I'm asking the ODA to clarify prior to issuing these permits. Right now, there's no, there's no questions asked on ownership details, zoning, or anything. They're pushing all the due diligence down on the counties to find those parcels and do something about it. Most of those permits are hidden under LLC names, yet the parcels are hidden under tax, under personal names for tax liability, and makes it really hard for you guys to find those individuals and bring them to bear. I, I'm asking, Rob Bevett and I have had conversations. They're asking, he's asking you, as his client, to please go to him and ask him, you know, to, to do something about it. We have the Hemp Association, the Oregon Department of Agriculture, as well as the Farm Bureau, all behind this measure. And now I'm just asking Deschutes County, and this is specifically a Deschutes County issue, because we have a lot, since, you know, the master plan was changed in 92, we have a lot of small EFU parcels and MUA parcels that were, with the intention of making mom and pop farms back in the day. However, those have all been taken over, you know, by, by people for residential reasons. Now, I don't think that the intention of this program, certainly when we wrote the law in 2015, House Bill 4060, was not to just have everybody with two acres growing weed. It's never, it's never the point. They saw our profitability, they saw our business models, and decided to jump on board. It's definitely affected the livability in the county. I have a kid, I live in Tumalo, I've lived there since 2003, and when I drive around every corner, I don't want to see a field of weed. It's just, it's, you know, this is, these laws have been in place. I'm sorry that we weren't maybe as forthright with the information prior, but I feel it's time that maybe the county looks at it and perhaps a lux request on MUA and RR, because take the word hemp out of it. Take, take the crop out of it. You're looking at industrial processes on RR. And they're, they're definitely happening in Deschutes County. You have industrial use going on on RR and MUA properties and parcels without your permission. And that is against county code on all levels.
Good. Any questions, Commissioners?
No.
Yeah, spoken, you know, I went and I've spoken personally with Tim Canop. He likes it. Everyone's on board. Hopefully that we can start this process.
Couple of questions I have. One, you mentioned, it seems like this is a little different than the, some of the testimony we've heard from some of the marijuana growers in terms of them wanting to have more access or, or less regulation. You're saying you're, you want regulation, I guess, into the MUA and RR 10. What's that?
Yeah, the only ones you have the ability to.
Yeah.
EFU is protected under state right to farm. And we wrote that on purpose, untouchable, because those are commercial properties. You shouldn't need a lux, you should be able to use those for outright farming. But RR, the primary use is residential. MUA, you have to ask permission. You know, that's, these are common.
And then the other question, as you said, you don't want to go around the corner, there's a two, two acre field of, are you saying weed?
Well, it's all the same to me.
So, I thought that was the big distinction, is that hemp wasn't weed. I mean, I know that, I know the distinction.
Technically, no, but on a lifestyle level and, and livability level, it's exactly the same. There's no difference.
Yeah, from in terms of odor and other parts of things, it's very, yeah, and we're aware of that, yeah.
And just general disputes in the neighborhood. You know, we spent years discussing marijuana. You did a great job regulating it to the point where it's pretty hard to get anything done now. And I feel that, once again, EFU is untouchable, and that's kind of the point of, of the whole right to farm and tying it to, tying HB 4062, those existing right to farm laws. But MUA and RR are absolutely up to your control. You've, you haven't taken the control, you've had it the whole time, and it's, and the way that the ODA is handling the licensing and permitting process doesn't give you any ability to really track or do due diligence on those properties, because they're giving the licenses. And then in turn, it's up to, you know, whoever the neighbor to complain or whatever situation. You know, the other thing is that, you know, if Sheriff Shane is really concerned about finding the OMMP grows, ODA industrial hemp has no restrictions on siloing a medical marijuana grow in the same place. And absolutely, 90% of the people, especially on the RRs and MUAs, are doing both.
Okay, good. Well, this is just public comment, maybe we can follow up further after the meeting, but thanks.
Thanks for your time.
Next, we have Mary Fleishman.
My name is Mary Fleishman. I've been a resident of Ben for 32 years. I'm here because I want to address the oversight of the Commissioners' travel to conferences. Mr. Henderson has made a comment that there's no oversight, and the practice is not to oversee each other's plans when it comes to conferences, and I'm specifically referring to your trip to the ALEC conference. As a retired employee of Deschutes County for 28 years, that is not the policy I had to adhere to when I wanted to attend conferences or trainings. I needed approval from my supervisor and then the director of our department. It needed to be cost-effective and pertinent to my job. The training conference had to be pretty important to be able to go out of state, and generally speaking, we were not allowed to go out of state. And basically, in the 28 years that I was employed, I think I only was allowed out of the state just a few times. My question is, where's the oversight for your, for you, the Commissioners? Do you have a different policy than other county employees? As a taxpayer to the county, I want to see more oversight for these expenditures. Conferences, trainings, and lobbying, which are directly related to county issues, I can support. Politically oriented conferences, I do not support. As far as reimbursements, again, as a former county employee, I was required to be clear about expenditures. Receipts needed to be turned in immediately upon returning from a conference or a training, not months later. Everyone had to be aware of where, where I had gone and aware of how the money was going to be spent. And we had a certain amount of expenditures we were allowed, and anything over that, we had to personally pay out of, out of our own pocket. So I just would like the Commissioners to either follow the same policy as the, as the employees, or come up with, develop some kind of policy that's transparent and cost-effective. Thank you. Thank you.
Your comment. Any questions?
No questions.
Any questions?
No.
Tonya Lunsford.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Tonya Lunsford. I'm here to speak in opposition against the ODOT proposed plan for the couplet. So I'd just like to read a letter that I have formulated for them.
That's the letter you gave us a copy of?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have lived in the Terrebonne-North Redmond area since 1971 and have been involved in commerce and in the community since that time. Terrebonne is a community with unique and diverse needs that are different from anywhere else in Deschutes County and perhaps different from anywhere in the state. Terrebonne has always had a busy highway running through it and has still managed to keep a small town cool in feel and culture. The rapid growth of Central Oregon, Smith Rock State Park, and the pumpkin patches have created additional traffic issues and hazards. With these unique challenges, there must be a unique solution to the traffic problem in our little community. I have attended public and private business owner meetings with ODOT and have given my input in those meetings. The following outlines my argument against the current couplet plan. The couplet plan does not adequately solve the lower bridge connection issue that currently exists. Lower bridge travelers should be able to travel either north or south on Highway 97 without traveling extra unnecessary miles. The couplet plan does not improve the Smith Rock Way connection that exists now. With the couplet plan, Smith Rock Way traffic must stop at 11th Street and either cross the now two-lane highway to turn left at the next block onto southbound lanes, or stop and turn right onto now northbound lanes, very similar to the situation that currently exists that ends up with cars stacking at peak traffic hours. The couplet plan does not improve pedestrian crossings for the school zone as it adds traffic lanes without providing a light to stop that traffic that's going 35 miles an hour now. The couplet is an auto-dominated plan and does not consider or account for local needs such as getting to the school, churches, the post office, services, and local access roads. The couplet will create new safety issues. There is minimal distances proposed between the north and southbound lanes, with business parking lots being the majority of the pavement spanning the difference between the two highways. The couplet will create an expressway through Terrebonne. The proposal is for four or five lanes of traffic in Terrebonne, with only two lanes of traffic coming in and out on either side. When the frustrated driver in the crowded two-lane highway reaches the four lane in Terrebonne, it will create a passing lane environment. The couplet will have dangerous unintended consequences. It takes two highly-traveled historical roads that have been two-way roads for their lifetime and turns them to one-way roads. Redmond is a good example of this issue, with cars continually traveling the wrong way on one-way roads many years after that change has been made. I am also against the current statement from ODOT that Terrebonne gets one of these three things. One, a couplet. Two, five lanes. Three, nothing. To have Terrebonne be funneled into these three options feels much like a threat and does not feel conducive to the solution process or good communication. Terrebonne is special, not just to those who live there, but also as a gateway into Deschutes County. Terrebonne deserves a plan that is conducive to growth, our community, and movement in the area, not just the number of vehicles we can get through in one hour. ODOT has the resources and the expertise to continue to find the right solution that can benefit travelers and our community. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for coming today.
Thank you.
As you know, we're, we're working to keep, keep up with it. I understand there's ongoing meetings and, and so, yeah, thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Not seen none. And I will move on to our consent agenda. Either of the Commissioners have any changes to the consent agenda as it's proposed?
No.
Okay. Look for motion approval.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? So this highlights, thank you note to Judge Sullivan, who is leaving the Public Safety Coordinating Council after many years. He was a judge, longtime judge here, and so that's a kind of a major step. I know he's been involved with Lipsec for a long time, so that's nice. And some reappointments, we've gotten confirmed some follow-up on those that we wanted to do, so I think we're, I'm in support of that. So I, for a motion of approval?
And we approve this, the consent?
Yeah, so it has moved.
Okay, good, okay. Commissioner Dair?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes also. So the next item on the action agenda is Janice Garceau, a consideration of board health, board signature of document number 2019-092, Oregon Health Authority Amendment Grant Award.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Janice Garceau, Deputy Director of Behavioral Health, and we are asking today for your signature on an amendment of the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority to add $142,857 to support state-targeted grant funds to address the opioid crisis. It's a mouthful, but it's a small grant. They're dispersing the money at once in the contract to do the activities that we brought to you several months ago, quite a few months ago, to address the opioid crisis. And those activities are the purchase of naloxone, the implementation of some peer support services through a temp agency, actually, in this case, because it's such a time-limited grant amount, and some other related training of staff and community partners in the administration of naloxone. It also allows for some funds to purchase fentanyl test strips to really try to avoid accidental overdose from fentanyl for injectors.
Can you, Jas, how did this come about, or what was the, if it's an amendment to an existing one, was it just new funds, or?
It was federal funds that were released, really quite a while ago, probably almost a year ago, if not more than that. A whole package of federal funds designed to address the opioid crisis, and this was one package of targeted grant funds for addressing the overdose risk for injectors in particular. And there were, there was a lot of behind-the-scenes discussion around how they were going to release these funds, and I think this is just where they landed. They landed with an amendment to the existing service contract so that they could just disperse the funds in a straightforward way.
And, you know, you hear a lot in the press about the fentanyl, and is it, I have no knowledge whether that's in our communities now, or?
Yes, it's in our.
How much gets here, or whatever. I mean, you hear about it coming across the border and how dangerous it is, but what's the?
Yes, it's in our communities now, and it is associated with overdose deaths with a certain percentage. There has been an increase even in Deschutes County in overdose deaths, and that was outlined in our grant application, and fentanyl is implicated in some of those.
Some of those, okay.
Yeah.
Good. Any questions, Commissioner?
Just kind of the timing. So this is going to be for this, I think of it as a biennium at the state level, so these funds are coming in right now. Is this going to be for the rest of this fiscal year and part of next fiscal year from Deschutes County's point of view?
Well, that's a question I had as well. We, originally, the grant funds were intended to be expended by May of 2019, so clearly we are not going to expend by then. Since they're choosing to disperse the grant funds, the way that they're dispersing them, I think we have the latitude to expend them through the period of time that we can afford to cover the cost of the peer. The rest of the costs are really one-time-only kinds of costs. It's training people, buying product, dispersing it, overseeing the grant. So my assumption is that once we hire this individual, we have about a year of funding for a part-time peer to support our syringe exchange program and our internal substance use disorder treatment programs.
For the rest of this fiscal year and part of next?
Yes.
For Deschutes County's?
Yes. Probably March to March.
Yep, there we go.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dair, any comments?
I just had a question.
Yes.
So you're requesting 1,500 doses of Narcan? It's, that's what the allocation is?
Yes.
Do you expect that for the whole year, then, the 1,500? If you're calling March to March? It's like $75 a dose, is what they're saying.
Yes, that's the total amount we could afford with the funds available in the grant. So we will then be dispersing that. We will have some that we keep in-house, but lots that will go out into the community, may be connected to the syringe exchange program. We may even provide some to some other community health partners. Okay.
So, yeah, with that, I'll move board signature of document number 2019-092.
Yeah, I just had a question.
Yes.
These are existing staff that you utilize with this program, or would it require hiring new?
It requi, well, we, the way we structured this grant, because it was such a short-term position, it was part-time, is to utilize these dollars to work with a temp agency we've used to hire temporary peer support specialist. So we have some active recruitments that we've had for peers, and sometimes we're able to reach back out to them and employ them through the temp agency, and it avoids creating a permanent position, a limited-duration position for such a short period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's what I understood.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? So, so the motion is board signature of document number 2019-092. And how do you vote, Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Dair?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
The next item is the Sheriff's Office Terrebonne Substation Lease, board signature of document number 2019-093. And we have Joe Brundage.
Hi. Yeah, welcome. This is a renewal of the lease. We previously had a three-year lease with a flat rate. It didn't have any cost of living adjustments or anything. So it went up 5%, but because of the things that are happening in Terrebonne with the possible rerouting of traffic, we wanted to keep it short to just six months to keep our options open and reevaluate how we want to continue to use that office as things change.
I wondered why.
So, yeah, so our understanding of the Terrebonne project, I didn't think they would be doing any construction this year. I don't know. Mr. Doty, is there any?
Not for a year.
For a year, so is there some other, I mean, I didn't think there was going to be any changes from what we've seen in the next year, year and a half.
Yeah, we didn't know if going into the end of this year, they might start any of that. We're also looking at taking a, a small space at the fire department out there that they might have available for us, or, or something that's more affordable.
So I see this is a six-month lease with two six-month options.
Yes.
So it's kind of a year and a half window that you're looking at?
Yes. So we just, we want to shorten the term and just keep a little more flexibility as we reevaluate that.
If you're, you're saying the landlord is Darrell Ferguson, I think that's one of the main, I mean, a property owner there that's involved in a lot of the Terrebonne transportation planning, and so they're open to the six-month lease.
Yes, they, they understood.
Okay.
And agreed that it was a smart thing to do.
I didn't have any other specific questions. Commissioner Dair, do you have any questions?
No, I was just curious why it was a six-month, but now I understand, so.
I just hope we're not out on our heels without an option in July, but if they're open to having you.
Yeah, no, they, they want to keep us, and if, you know, if it seemed, we're, we're happy there if we don't have a cheaper option, and, and as long as the traffic doesn't create hazards. That's really just an office for patrol people to stop and write reports. There's no one there.
Manning it.
Manning it.
Mr. Doyle, did you have any other comments about the lease?
Sheriff's Office Counsel reviews this, I didn't.
Okay.
It's been made for review.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. You want to make, someone want to make a motion?
I move we sign the document for the board's signature of document number 2019-093 for the Sheriff's Office Terrebonne Substation Lease.
And I'll second it.
Commissioner Dair?
I vote yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the board, or the chair votes yes, so.
There you go.
I didn't ask for any more discussion, but it sounded like we were done, so.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So the next item is consideration of board signature of resolution 2019-002 InfraGrant. And Chris Doty will be joining us.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
So we met with ODOT in a work session on January 28th and discussed how the county can support ODOT's upcoming InfraGrant application for the US 97 Bend North Corridor Project. In addition to the three projects that we have planned that ODOT intends to include within the, the application, the two roundabouts on Tumalo Road and Hundle Road, we also discussed contributing $5 million towards the grant application. And the reason why is that ODOT, you know, recently applied for this grant. They debriefed their application, which was unsuccessful, and learned that successful applicants had a much higher match in terms of the local match element of their applications. And that's a very considerable factor that the InfraGrant folks review when it comes to which applications to approve. So the higher the match, the stronger odds you're going to have in terms of, of having a successful application. So at the conclusion of the work session several weeks ago, Board, you asked that we return to you with a revised draft capital improvement plan, just showing how $5 million could be, could land within our CIP. And before you, in a super-small font spreadsheet, you have a draft 10-year capital improvement plan showing that $5 million contribution in fiscal year '20, in addition to the outlying program years remaining in that 10-year CIP. As you can see, in fiscal year '21, we do have a pretty aggressive program planned, but that also includes contributions to other ODOT projects in the region. We have seven and a half million, or thereabouts, planned for projects in Tumalo, associated with the Tumalo refinement plan, and additionally, some dollars allocated towards the Terrebonne project as well for local system improvements, should those need to be accessed. So you'll see in fiscal year '21, you know, it, it takes our ending fund balance down quite a ways, but we recover quickly in the ensuing years as we continue to make contributions into our capital improvement plan through, mostly through the new house bill money that's arriving and projected for the next eight to 10 years. So before you, you have a resolution, 2019-002, which basically says, yes, we, we support this InfraGrant application. We commit ourselves to delivering the projects that we actually already have in our CIP, the two roundabouts on Tumalo Road and Old Ben Redmond Highway, Tumalo Road, Tumalo Place, and the Hundle Road Project, which we had previously committed last year. In addition to that, there's a $5 million contribution in cash that would be added to the project that would take ODOT's contribution, their match within the application, north of 60%, which has been their goal in, in getting additional cash match out of a local government to support that project, which, you know, has not just local, but regional and, and national interest in terms of US 97 as a corridor for freight and, and other needs.
Great. So I see three items on here. Section 1, 2, 3 talks about InfraGrant Application North Corridor Project, which is this topic, but the other, Deschutes County Obligation to Construct Parallel Route and Support. So are those items currently scheduled? They're not, we're not changing those items with this resolution?
Correct, yeah. What's different this year than last year was last year we did commit to Hundle. That would be something that we would need to, to act on. We would need to act on it this year as well. This year, ODOT included the two roundabout projects we have planned on Tumalo Road. Because of the, the parallel route, the alternative route nature of Old Ben Redmond Highway, Tumalo Road, they felt that they could include those in the application to show, you know, local support for that project.
So then this resolution really becomes a wonderful tool, showing support to the federal government on this, these investments.
Absolutely. This is the, the letter of support and the commitment that will, you know, ODOT's application will reflect these numbers, and it'll be official at that time.
And then also just acknowledging the year 2021. And then also just acknowledging the year 2021, you know, a lot of big expenditures, but it's still wonderful knowing that we're not going red anywhere and we're talking about a possible balance of 979,000. So it's still close to a million dollars, being able to kind of dream of the future, the future capital improvements.
Yeah, and this is just a preview, I think, of the capital improvement plan, the five-year portion at least that you'll see in the budget process coming up in a few months that, and you will approve through the budget process as well. So it's, it's draft for now, but it's, this is just meant to show you that we have the capacity to accommodate this.
Well, this is also in light of having scheduled dollars for the aggressive maintenance program that we celebrated in the Deschutes County road system.
That's correct.
Yeah, very exciting.
Commissioner Adair, any questions or comments?
I was just very happy that he gave us the larger. You were the small one.
Did you get this one off? Oh, it's the other, yeah. So on this chart, the colored chart, what you're really, the big change is that this blue would have been $5 million higher if we weren't doing this.
Correct.
That's really the, and you're showing the significant drop of ending balance for the, in the blue for that one year and then kind of going forward. But you're saying we're not getting, as Commissioner DeBonne said, a, to a negative or being put in jeopardy. Yeah, so good. And then, because, and you're saying we have the capacity to do this additional $5 million and still not be underwater and, and make a, maybe make a difference in the InfraGrant.
That's correct. Yeah, it fits within our, our long-term plan, so we can, we can do it.
Well, I'm, I'm in support of it, as we said at our work session, and since this is the public meeting where we're approving this. The other thought I wanted to share, I, I shared it with Mr. Doty, but I wanted to share with the commissioners that when I was in Washington, I talked with Congressman Walden's staff about the InfraGrant and I'd like to encourage us to be more leaders in getting this through. I think it's as much a, as we've said before, as much a county problem as it is a city problem, although we don't have the resources to really fund it the same way. It will impact more, you know, Deschutes County citizens than any other single thing we're doing, because so many people go through that north section. And I encouraged Congressman Walden's office to be looking at it from, from their end as to helping with it, because I think they have some access to the Transportation Department and, in Washington in terms of, you know, this, having an eye on this project is something that's worthwhile. And I'm, and I'm still of a belief that there'll be an infrastructure package coming out of Congress in the next year, so, because I, I just think they can't help themselves. So, so maybe we won't need to spend our $5 million because there'll be so much coming, but anyway. Those are some other thoughts about.
That's optimistic, yes.
Well.
When I was able to do that the year before with the previous InfraGrant application, I was in Washington DC, I made an outreach to the Department of Transportation folks. I wasn't able to connect up, but they know, Deschutes County Commissioner was calling and trying to connect.
Yeah, so I've asked Mr. Doty to, to kind of seek ways that we could help with that as opposed to just being a more backseat participant, maybe be a driver because of the effect on county, you know, county citizens throughout, you know, of all of our cities and towns and rural areas. Good. So, any other comments?
No.
Tom, any comments? Okay. So.
I move to approve resolution 2019-002, committing support and resources to the ODOT InfraGrant application.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got the next three, actually.
Well, you don't have to go back and sit down. We'll go on to the next one.
I'll be here in a minute, but I got one more.
Let's see, okay. So the next item is consideration of authorizing the county administrator's signature of document number 2019-118, Safe Routes to Schools Grant Award for the Terrebonne Community School. Great.
So last summer, board, we brought a grant application to you for ODOT's Safe Routes to Schools program. The grant would be for sidewalks on the north side of the Terrebonne Community School on C Avenue, including a channelized crossing for, for students. This was the first year that Safe Routes to Schools was robustly funded through House Bill 2017. ODOT had $16 million in grant funding to award. They received $85 million in grant project applications. So we're pleased to announce that our project was one that was selected. And so before you is an agreement with ODOT for $349,721 towards that project will be required to provide a 20% match of $87,318. So very, very happy that was able to happen and probably the one thing in Terrebonne that's happening right now that maybe everyone can agree on, sidewalks on C Avenue in front of Terrebonne Community School.
Any, any thought, Chris, about why we qualified out of 85 million requests?
So the first-year application process did favor small communities and Title I schools in addition to roads that were of greater than a certain width, which C Avenue was barely, and, and higher speed, prevailing speed. So we checked all the boxes on, on the applications and, you know, we're, just were able to be successful in, in that regard. We, we hit on all the criteria. I, I know that regional equity was a, a factor that they considered, and so in terms of getting projects in ODOT Region 4 and ODOT Region 5, trying to get, you know, a few in each region and not having the, the Portland area, you know, take all the funding. So we were able to benefit from that and other things.
Are we applying for new ones this year?
They have not released a, a call for projects yet. I believe the next call, though, will be for non-infrastructure, so programs within schools that, that help, help kids learn how to, you know, bike to school, you know, choose routes, virtual school buses, you know, things like that that support encouraging kids to walk and bike to school. I know that Terrebonne Community School will probably be interested in applying for that when it does come out. There were other good applications in Deschutes County and ODOT Region 4 that will probably, you know, try to tap into the infrastructure one. I, I think we'd be hard-pressed to probably, you know, get it two times in a row.
Were there other schools that applied for this one?
Not within the, the county system.
Right, within the county.
But there were, I think, several in Bend and, and at least one in Redmond that, that applied that were unsuccessful. City of Madras was successful, and they were the only other application in ODOT Region 4 that, that was successful.
Hmm, interesting. Okay.
Great.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. So, is there a motion and support?
I move to authorize the county administrator to sign grant agreement number 33102 with the Oregon Department of Transportation.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
No.
I'm noting here that the grant agreement's different than the, okay, I see. They gave us the wording to use. Okay, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you.
I'll leave you with Cody now.
All right. Cody, we're left with you.
Left with me. Thanks for the moral support.
Yeah. So the next item is consideration of board signature document 2019-122, Second Amendment to Document Number 2016-521, an intergovernmental agreement between the Oregon Department of Transportation, the City of Lepine, and Deschutes County for US 97, the Sun River Interchange OR 31 Project.
Good morning, Cody Smith. Thank you, and sorry, that's a little bit of a mouthful there, but. So back in 2016, we entered into an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT and the City of Lepine for the US 97 Sun River Interchange to Oregon 31 Project. That project, at least the, the scope of work that was identified in that agreement has been substantially completed this past construction season. So that included the paving on Highway 97 from Sun River down to, down to south of Lepine and the, the sidewalk improvements within the City of Lepine on Highway 97. We had entered into an amendment to that agreement, and, and I should say that the county's obligation under that original agreement was, was really nothing other than allowing ODOT to enter onto our right-of-way at locations where we have county roads intersecting the state highway. We entered into a second agreement, our second, First Amendment to that agreement last year, actually in 2017, end of 2017. Some of the scope of work within the City of Lepine had changed, so the costs had increased. So again, under that Second Amendment, there really were no county obligations. So now, we get to our Second Amendment that's before you today. This, this amendment is primarily to add street lighting at two intersections within Lepine, those, those being Roslin Road and Burgess Road. So that's really all this amendment is addressing. Again, no additional county obligations other than allowing ODOT to enter onto our right-of-way.
Quick question. Was this the document we were going to look at a few months ago, or some, some document we had that was, we kind of held up for a little bit?
No, that, that was, that was regarding the, the flat program, the Federal Land Access Program. So no, that, that wasn't tied to this project at all.
Any questions?
Is this kind of look, looking at closure for this project then, from ODOT's point of view and the partnership?
As far as closure, I, I'm not sure. There, there's been some other talk of some, some additional components that they're discussing adding within the City of Lepine. I, I don't anticipate there, there, as far as the county's involvement in this, I don't anticipate any county road improvements coming out of this, other, other than this intersection, lighting at our intersection with the state highway. But I, I know there has been some talk about some, some other more safety components being added within the, the downtown area of Lepine that didn't, didn't show up in this amendment. So it's, it's possible that we might see another amendment.
So I guess I was going down the path of the Van Devert improvements and possible, you know, divided highway improvements. That's another whole project from ODOT's point of view?
That's another project, another agreement that we have entered into with ODOT, so yeah.
So that'd just be a whole different project?
Yes.
From their point of view?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair, any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Okay.
I'll move, yeah, approval of document number 2019-122, the Second Amendment to Document Number 2016-521, the intergovernmental agreement for US 97 Sun River Interchange to OR 31 Project.
I second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Then, next item on the agenda is, and number 16, consideration of signature document number 2019-123, Notice of Intent to Award Contract for Supplying and Hauling of Crushed Pre-Coded Rock for Chip Seal, 2019 to Knife River Corporation. And Cody Smith will go over this for us also.
So the Road Department solicited for bids for furnishing our crushed, pre-coated chip seal rock for calendar year 2019. Two bids were received from Knife River Corporation Northwest and High Desert Aggregate and Paving, Inc. The, the lowest bid was from Knife River with a total bid of $669,970. So before you this morning is the Notice of Intent to Award for that contract.
One question I had, Cody, was a lot of times we see more than two bidders. Was there a reason, are these the only two people that supply this to us in the region? Or was that, does that seem unusual to them?
So, so last year, we actually received four bids on this. However, one of them was from a, a company over in Virginia. It, it really didn't make a lot of sense to us, and we actually had to reject their bid because they weren't pre-qualified to bid through ODOT for, for aggregate production. So, but, but last year, we did receive a bid, I believe it was the first year we had received a bid from Taylor Northwest. Couldn't tell you why they didn't provide us with a bid this year.
Who, who was it awarded to last year?
Last year, it was awarded to High Desert, I think, I think, well, several years before that, I think, I think High Desert is, has been the successful bidder as we've awarded this contract to them, so.
Another question, just in the big picture, has the amount kind of stayed, stayed the same, you know, the volume of rock each year? Or do we have, is, is it up and down, you know, hundreds of tons?
No, the volume of rock is, is staying pretty well the same. I mean, because our, our length of road that we're chip sealing, in total, about 90 miles has, has stayed about the same. As far as the cost, the cost is, we saw just a slight increase in cost this year over, over last year. I think a lot of that's just due to trucking. There's, there's more going farther away from, from where the, the rock pits are, are located up in the north part of the county, or north of the county, rather.
Great. Okay. All right, any questions?
I just was curious, because your engineers had costed it out at $694,000, and this is, the winning bid is like $25,000 less. Is that usually the normal range for a, for someone to bid it?
Is that the normal range?
I mean, percentage-wise?
You mean between the, the low bidder and the engineer's estimate?
Yeah.
I, I don't know that there's necessarily a normal range there or a normal percentage. In this case, our estimate was just based on our, our prices we had last year hauling to similar stockpiles that we added a little bit of a contingency to.
Okay, I just was curious.
All right.
I'll move approval of board chairman's signature of document number 2019-123, Notice of Intent to Award Contract for Supplying and Hauling of Crushed Pre-Coded Rock for Chip Seal, 2019 to Knife River Corporation Northwest.
I'll second it.
It's moved and seconded to approve the requested action. Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Adair?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Okay. Let's see, our final action is the board, is the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners will be the public hearing on the Sun River Business Park Child Care Text Amendment. Nicole will join us to walk us through this.
Good morning.
Morning. Do I need to start reading this now, or do, do you start first? Okay. So this is the time and place set for hearing on 247-18-000926-T-A. Staff will outline the hearing procedure that will be followed.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Nicole Mardell, Associate Planner, Deschutes County Community Development. The hearing's body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning this application. The applicants, Wayne and Peggy Lowry and Donald Pope, are requesting approval of a text amendment to the Deschutes County Zoning Code, Section 18, 108, 110, to allow for childcare nurseries and preschools in the Sun River Business Park zoning district. All testimony shall be directed to the hearing's body. At the conclusion of this hearing, the hearing's body will deliberate toward a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will provide a brief report. The applicant will then present its testimony and evidence. Opponents and proponents will then present their testimony and evidence. Any other interested persons will then present testimony and evidence. The applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony, and if requested by the hearing's body, staff will provide closing comments. A full written version of the hearing procedures is available at the table at the side of the room. Commissioners must disclose any prior hearing observations, biases, or conflicts of interest.
Okay. Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of the same and whether you can proceed. Commissioner Adair?
No.
I have done.
And the chair was briefed, I guess you had talked about it in a work session last Wednesday, and I was briefed about kind of the substance of the procedure, but didn't have any other conflicts or biases related to it. So, the hearing's body discloses, oh, we did that. Okay, so we've done that.
So then we'll open the hearing and I'll provide a brief report.
I think you have to say, does any party?
Does any party wish to challenge any commissioner based on biases or conflicts?
Okay. So I'll open the hearing and, and direct staff to proceed with your brief staff report.
Excellent, thank you.
Commissioner, if I could jump in there just to make it crystal clear for the procedural record, the applicant is a current county employee and elected official here with the county, at least one of the applicants is. So I think that should probably be disclosed on the record, just so that's clear.
Well, yeah, let's take a moment and acknowledge that. So we did discuss this in the work session, that's why I didn't jump up to mind right now, but this is the public hearing now. So yeah, being the county treasurer, there's a relationship with him and his wife and, and the relationship business-wise, but yeah, nothing out of that. So, yeah, as I say, we discussed it in a work session, but this is the official hearing.
Well, I was aware that. Well, I was aware that Lowry was somehow involved in it, but I really don't know how, and I had also realized he was leaving the county sometime this spring, so I didn't, but I haven't had any specific conversations with him about this project, and not aware of any.
There you go. Thanks for the reminder.
Yeah. Okay.
So as stated in the opening comments, the applicant is requesting to amend the Sun River Business Park zone to allow for childcare facilities, nurseries, and preschools as a permitted use. Just one item to note is that any application would still be reviewed through a site plan review application, seeing as a childcare facility would be a semi-public use. There would still be standards related to parking, landscaping, et cetera, so there still would be a land use review, even though it would be permitted outright. To give you some background on the Sun River Business Park zone, it's approximately 69 acres and outlined here in blue. To the east is the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. To the south is the Caldera Springs subdivision. To the north and west is South Century Drive. Within the business park, it was originally intended for industrial uses, but since it's been established, there have been mostly commercial uses established within the zone, those including facilities like a mini storage unit facility, a brewing facility with taproom, a church, also the Three Rivers School is partially located within the district, yoga studio, coffee shop, a variety of uses. The applicant's intent behind this proposed text amendment is that they are seeking to address a dire need for childcare in Deschutes County, Sun River specifically. So they found a preferred facility location off of Venture Lane within this district, and based on the fact that it's not currently allowed, within the Sun River Business Park zone, they are pursuing the text amendment. To give you an idea of where childcare nurseries and/or preschools are currently allowed in Deschutes County, here's kind of a list outlining the existing zones. You can see that we handle it in a variety of different ways. There are certain circumstances where it's allowed outright with site plan review similar to this request. Other areas require conditional use permit. There may be location requirements or square footage requirements involved. In regard to public comment, we've received eight letters of support for this application. Those individuals are listed here. They include representatives from the Sun River Chamber of Commerce, Ben Lapine Schools, Economic Development for Central Oregon, and private citizens. We have not received any letters of opposition to this application. The Planning Commission held their initial public hearing on January 24th. Three individuals testified in support of the application. There is no testimony in opposition of the application, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously for approval of the proposed text amendment. The Board has three options to move forward today. They could choose to continue the hearing to a date and time certain, close the hearing and leave the written record open to a date and time certain, or close the hearing and commence deliberations. And with that, I welcome any questions. Thank you.
Questions, Commissioner Adair?
Well, I know there's a definite need in Sun River. I read all the letters, and I think it's an important addition to the community, you know, to make this zoning change. So, no, I'm in support of the project, and I am happy that somebody's stepping up to fill this giant need of our county. We def, you know, it's amazing. People work there and can't find childcare. It's a serious problem.
Commissioner DeBonne, any questions?
So, just for clarity, is this for that single parcel or the zone? So the building next door could apply after this is in the zone also?
Correct. So it's for the entire business park zone, so not specific to any particular property.
Great. Thank you.
I have no specific questions. Now, so the applicant would be up next, is it, okay, so I guess we'll move on to that. And you can either, yeah, stand there if you have a presentation, or you can sit down here, so. For the record of you, tell us your name.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Greg Blackmore, Blackmore Planning. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, on the applicants, rather, Wayne and Peggy Lowry and Donald Pope. Through this application process, I've been involved. We've had a transportation engineer involved, and of course, the applicants. What I hope to talk to you about quickly today is just introduce the application materials. There's an extensive record that's been provided, written record. This has been ongoing for a while, and so walk through the introduction of the application materials, discussion of the need, overall, the proposal, the process, touch on the approval criteria. Did attend the work session and heard some of the comments there, and also, we have a request for adoption by emergency, which I'll make note of. So within the application materials in the record, where there's application form, there's an application fee, we've shown the map, we've provided a burden of proof narrative that documents conformance with all approval criteria, population demographics, actually a past county decision that approved a childcare facility in this general vicinity before it was actually, it had the business park district zoning on it. Articles documenting a need for childcare nationally, locally, and letters of support, we put it included in the record. Some of the articles discuss the need nationally, the benefits of childcare. There's articles that document what other jurisdictions are doing to address the need. There's the reference to a childcare desert in Deschutes County. So rather extensive information about the need, which we've seen. All of the letters were already identified, as noted. There's letters from local childcare resource specialists, state childcare resource specialists, the Sun River Resort, Human Resources, business analysts documenting the need and supporting the proposal, principals of Three Rivers School, executive director from Sun River Chamber of Commerce. So really tried to, Ben Lapine School District, EDCO, trying to make sure that it's well documented of the need and the general support. As Nicole noted, not heard any comments or letters of opposition to date. Just nationally, the need, just to touch on that, studies are showing that kids are better prepared for kindergarten if they're in quality childcare. Let's see, in addition to just the children benefit, there's also a benefit to the workforce. Having quality childcare allows parents to stay in workforce, it can break cycles of poverty, and also contribute to the development of future workforce. When addressing the need, it's noted that what jurisdictions can do is not just provide funding and resources such as that, but to reduce regulatory burdens and hurdles to allow for childcare centers. Let's see, nationally, there's a note, one of the articles in the record makes a note of childcare, sorry, of Central Oregon, Deschutes County being a childcare desert. And what that means is that there's over 50 children in the area that are five, that age five, that contain no childcare providers, or there's so few options, three times as many children that need childcare as licensed facilities that are available. This has been addressed, there's articles that have been provided in the record that are noted, in the media. City Club had a January meeting that, I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to attend, but I did attend, and, you know, it was, we heard, the combination of that meeting and the hearing that we had before the Planning Commission, we heard stories of mothers and expecting mothers having to get on waitlists when they were pregnant, essentially. Also, of folks in Sun River area who work in Sun River, who drive from Sun River to Bend for quality childcare, only to come back to go to work in Sun River. So that daily commute, two times a day. So those are what we heard. The City Club meeting, what I pulled here is a lot of words, I apologize for all the words on the screen, but I made note of how the City Club highlighted and addressed that particular meeting in January. And what they make note of is that, one, the lack of viable childcare options impacts our local and economic pocketbook. There's only one slot for every three children who need childcare within Deschutes County. They also make note of, along with labor shortages that exist within all industries, lack of childcare adds to the difficulty of employees hiring quality talent, higher levels of absenteeism, and employees that are stressed by the ever-changing childcare landscape. Let's see, we have some statistics of number of slots, just focus in there in Sun River specific. There's an estimated demand of about 190 slots, and there's a supply of 28. Would make note that Neighbor Impact has been awarded $2.3 million to address this childcare crisis. So this, these are state, I believe they're state funds, I could be wrong, state funds to address the need. So the state has recognized that this crisis and has identified resources to help fund children, to go, to have, to pay for, to pay for their childcare. I apologize. So, South County, there's over 6,000 residents. The area is growing in terms of job and employment and job availability. However, there's three providers that are in-home daycare providers. Let's see, this application does provide no-cost, low-cost option for the county to address the zoning barrier, childcare. And let's see, moving on to the introduction, so that's the need, there's a need, well-documented need. We've identified where the introduction, the proposal, where the Sun River Business Park area is located, the request. I would make note the preschools, childcare facilities, and nurseries, we didn't come up with this, these are uses that are allowed in other zones, in other zones within Sun River. So we pulled what's already allowed and is our established uses, and identified them as requests that they be allowed uses within the Business Park District. So overall process, right now, this is an application to amend the text, to allow for this use. But the overall process requires both a text amendment for the use within this zone, and then ultimately a development application for a site-specific change of use application. Let's see, we've public hearing before the Planning Commission, of course, work and energy and effort to meet with county staff before submittal. Submittal of an application, hearing before a Planning Commission, hearing before the Board of County Commissioners, and then ultimately, if this is approved, then application for site-specific change of use. Just making note of this process, overall, this process is probably about a year-long process, and it kind of will highlight the reason for the request for adoption by emergency a little bit later.
Can you go back to that one slide there?
Yes, sir.
Text amendment, so what specifically is a nursery?
This is a use that is listed as an allowed use within Sun River Town Center District, I believe. So we basically just pulled uses that are allowed within the Town Center District. It's, and the reason I make note of that is, it's not defined within the Deschutes County Code.
Is this specific application that these applicants are seeking is for a childcare facility, correct? It's not, or is it a preschool?
This application, there's two steps to the process. Right now, as you might imagine, the request is to provide as much flexibility in the future, and as much flexibility in terms of childcare and childcare options within Sun River area, now and into the future.
So one of the thoughts, or just questions I had when I looked at the proposal, is that this childcare facility will be in a commercial area, basically, with, so it doesn't have a, a lot of ones I see in Bend are kind of in neighborhoods where they kind of have yards or areas that kids go out and run around in, whatever, during breaks or something. And I didn't, where this particular one is, it seems like it's in a building, so it doesn't have that. But I was wondering, we're expanding beyond just what I call daycare or childcare, we also have this nurseries, and I was thinking nurseries for little kids that are, I mean, I don't actually know what a nursery is today, but that language is in there, and I just was curious what that amounted to, or?
So I will address one, one is the request and the reason that, from a planning perspective, I requested in this manner, or suggested requesting this, in this manner, because all of these things are not defined. The Deschutes County Code has a definition for childcare facilities, and likely, that definition is broad enough to encompass all of these things, all of these.
Nurseries and nurseries.
Yes, sir, yes. Nonetheless, this use, these uses defined preschool, childcare facilities, and nurseries are uses that are permitted within Sun River Town Center District. So rather than trying to create something unique, say, here's a set of uses that are allowed within a zone, similar zone, just copy it and use it, and of course, that would provide the most flexibility in terms of addressing the need.
And Commissioners, if I may jump in, on page 98 of your packet, it actually provides the definition for childcare center and nursery. We don't necessarily have a preschool definition in our code, but when you look at the nursery definition, it gives some specification that if it's not meeting this nursery definition, then it would fall into the preschool category. So those definitions are listed there, page 98.
So for clarity, I would extrapolate that the sentence referring to preschools, childcare facilities, and nurseries has been used in other places in the Deschutes County Code, correct? So you took that sentence and said, let's put that sentence in this zone?
Yes.
So, yeah, I mean, it wasn't made up by you as an applicant, other than saying, hey, let's use this sentence in this zone.
This is a proven set of uses, this is a set of uses that have been proven to be acceptable in other zones. We feel that it's appropriate to be acceptable in this zone.
It's kind of interesting, because nursery is for aged 14 years or under, and that's not what I think of, so. Okay, good. Just wanted to clarify that.
So approval criteria, there's a need to document conformance with statewide planning goals, there is a need to document conformance, consistency with Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan policies, conformance with state, sorry, the transportation planning rule, and of course, a need and a benefit. In regards to statewide planning goals, Sun River is an incorporated urban community, which statewide planning goals really provide, they provide a lot of discretion to the county to determine what uses are appropriate in there. There's not agricultural lands that need to be protected, there's not forest lands that need to be protected. So there's a lot of discretion to the local jurisdiction to determine how they want that urban unincorporated community to grow and develop and ultimately be established. And we can jump into some of those specifics if you would like. Let's see, transportation planning rule, that requires that the change in the use or the allowed use would not result in a, or significantly affect a transportation facility. And so what we do for development code text amendments or new uses such as this, we look at within, is the proposed use result in equal or fewer trips in other uses that are permitted within the zone. This zone allows for post offices, for example, which are a high-trib generator. Childcare facilities, the proposed uses generate fewer trips than that, and as a result, the change in use or allowing this additional use does not significantly affect a transportation facility. And of course, we addressed the need and benefit earlier. So now I'm going to jump into the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan, and there's three policies that are directly related to the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan related to the Sun River Business Park area. And these note, the first one, a variety of commercial uses, so this is the intent of the zone. This is how the publics understand the intent of the zone. A variety of commercial uses which support the needs of the community in the surrounding rural area, and not uses solely intended to attract resort visitors should be encouraged. So the idea being that uses within the zone are not resort-specific, it's not visitor-specific, but rather to accommodate the needs of the surrounding community. Also, small-scale, low-impact commercial uses in conformance with the requirements of OAR. Larger, more intense is can be permitted if they are intended to serve the overall community. And of course, the last one there addresses industrial uses, if and how and why they should be allowed. So looking at these comprehensive plan policies, they So, looking at these comprehensive plan policies, they appear to support the idea of addressing the needs of the community, not resort-specific, but rather the broader I did attend the work session and heard some comments and concerns, you know, about the uses, the uses that are allowed within the zone. Will this use be a conflict to any of those uses that are allowed? Just kind of going through the uses that are identified as permitted uses, offices are permitted without any, so offices are permitted, libraries are permitted, post offices are permitted, churches are permitted, given a size requirement. When you get into some of the other more industrial-oriented type uses, or, or service-related uses, they're limited in, in terms of the size and scale. They can, they have to be in buildings that are less than 8,000 square feet in size. And then there is allowance for, for larger buildings for research, manufacturing, and food products. So, when you look at those uses, providing other services or childcare facilities within that area, doesn't seem to be any, any conflict between this use and the fact that there is a library that's right there. There's a school, actually a school that is neighboring and abutting the property. So, when we look at the uses, there's not, there doesn't appear to be any, any conflicts between this use. It's more of a, it accommodates folks who might be working there.
So, is there any concern that, or any limitation on the square footage of this use? I mean, I don't know why, why there's a 5,000-square-foot limit on churches or a...
Sure.
Eight thousand on other things, but, I mean, what if this ended up being a...
Sure.
Huge daycare center.
Sure, sure. From, from my perspective, and I'm sure from the planning, sorry, from the applicant's perspective, no. You know, the, the goal from, from a development and, and an intent to address the need would be to provide as much flexibility as possible. And so, not having any size or, any size restrictions placed upon them. Looking at uses that are there, looking at the size of schools that are, size of library that doesn't have any, any size restrictions on it, I don't see any need...
There's a library and 35-year-olds, 45-year-olds, from what, so I'm just wondering if they're, if, I mean, I'm just bringing it up, if the people that are in business there haven't brought it up, it's, I guess it's fine, but I just think about it, there's some fairly large ones in Bend that, that aren't really in, or in commercial areas, and I don't know what, I just, I'd bring it up, because for some reason, they put these other restrictions on things, which I don't know why, but...
So, in, in, the, the last item is just the request for adoption by emergency. In regards to timing, there, there are, applicants prepared and ready to submit a site plan for a change-of-use on a specific site that actually, back in 189, sorry, 1989, was, was actually approved as a childcare facility before the Business Park Zone was placed upon the property. So, with that said, knowing that in that time, the, the time of approval is, just forecasting out of how, if it takes a full 150 days for review, that's, that's five months down the road before we can ultimately get to approval, and if not adopted by emergency, then that actually gets pushed out, I believe it's another 75 days is, is the, the time period of, of how long it would take to ultimately get to addressing the need within Sun River. There is a, that Neighbor Impact grant that was received, that was identified, that's a pilot, it's a one-year pilot program, it's, there's, there's funds that are available that, that children could be provided, slots could be paid for if there are, and if there is quality childcare available. So, there needs to be quality childcare available so that those funds could be used. And trying to make sure we're, those grants are available, that, those funds are available to be used, and also addressing the need as quickly as possible, we are requesting adoption by emergency. So, conclusions at this point, there's a critical need for childcare facilities. State and local rules will allow for adding the use to the Sun River Business Park area. Sun River Business Park District and the surrounding area has been built out with a variety of commercial uses. It's really, it's not heavy industrial-focused, and this application provides a no-cost, low-cost opportunity for the county to address this critical need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you. This, next is the time for opponents or proponents of this application to present testimony or evidence. If anyone wants to say anything, we need a blue form filled out. Is there anyone that wants to, okay. But you, if you want to fill it out afterwards, that's fine, once you join us and introduce yourself for the record.
Good morning. My name is Karen Prowe, and I'm the Director of Neighbor Impact's Childcare Resources Program. And our agency is the one that received the Baby Promise $2.3 million pilot for the next year, and we are set to roll out in April. We received notification that we would be allowed to apply for the grant in December, and we had a two-week turnaround time to submit that and receive notification the second week in January. So this is moving very quickly. And during the time that I was actually writing our letter of interest, I connected with Peggy and found out that she was looking to open a program in Sun River. Prior to that, we were not looking at writing Sun River into the grant, because we didn't think there would be anyone there to provide services. So, the Baby Promise pilot is paid for by childcare development block grant funds, so those are federal dollars that are passed through the state as childcare development funds. And they had some overage and decided to address the need for infant toddler care by trying this pilot. And the pilot will serve families who are at 185% or lower of the federal poverty level. So, for a family of three, that's $39,460. And so, it's really addressing families who are going to have a hard time paying for childcare. We do have a DHS system in our state that helps to provide money to support childcare, but usually when people hit this level of income, their co-pay is sometimes between $800 and $900 a month. And so, even though they have support, they end up paying a huge amount out of their own income. This program will be paying $18,000 per year directly to the program for the child slot, and there will be no co-pay. We were awarded 109 slots through our grant, and 18 of those slots were written in for Sun River, for this program. So that's a huge boost for this program to open and be stable and really provide services to families for this from opportunity.
So, here's the 18,000 per child, per year?
Yes.
That's $1,500 a month is the...
Yes. Yes. And the strategies, including the high cost per child payment, is really to stabilize and grow the supply of infant toddler care. What's been happening in our area is rents are so high and employees have so many options of where they can go and work. Working for a childcare program where you're really not going to make a lot of money and your days are pretty long, it's just not an appealing thing. And so, there's really no profit at the end of the day. So, by bringing a, a higher payment per child, there's hope that that will stabilize that to help, to encourage people not to change their infant toddler slots over to preschool slots, where you can have more children and actually make more money than if you're providing infant slots. So, there's a, a lot of reasoning behind it. After a year, the state will look at their pilot and see was it successful or not at actually stabilizing the supply of infant toddler care. The, the program also comes with technical assistance and coaching and some business supports as well. So, it's a pretty big wraparound project.
So, you mentioned infant toddler, so this is preschool, and then it's very early, I don't know, what, what kind of age range?
So, the, the age range is six weeks to three years old, and that is traditionally the hardest care for families to find. It's also the age range where there's the highest turnover in employees, because there's usually not enough money to pay the employees to have them stick around. And then you lose that continuity of care for children to actually build stable relationships with a single provider.
Well, just a comment, I'm pretty familiar with home healthcare, and one of the big issues in home healthcare for adults is the home healthcare companies charge $25 an hour or more, and then they pay their help 12 and 13. And so, I hope that giving more to the company to run the company doesn't, does result in salary increases, because I've never understood that gap for administrative management. I just see as, because the home healthcare is such a vital thing, similar to childcare, but I, I don't see that, and I'm familiar with a variety of agencies that that really hap, in this community and others. So I hope it somehow translates down to salaries, because that's really the, the key to good help, is getting enough incentive to, and I don't know that that's happening in other spots, but anyway, I hope it does in this, so...
There are some guiding principles around this money, and so, once Neighbor Impact contracts with a program to provide services, there's a chance to sit down and say, here are the guiding principles given to us by the state of how this money should be used and how it should impact quality and salaries for employees being part of that quality component.
Okay, good, good. Any other questions or comments?
So, have you seen those guiding principles then?
We're still waiting for them, and so, I know that there are principles around quality, and they would like all the programs that are participating to be striving for a SPARC rating, which is Oregon's Quality Rating and Improvement System that was adopted about five years ago. So really looking at the overall quality of the program and how it impacts children and families. And so, that is one, is to address it as a quality program, support of staff, support of infrastructure of the business, so that it's not just money coming to a business, and hopefully everything will go well. It's how do we put more money into a program and help them use that money to really build up their stability? So, it, those, I think there's about five that we know about, but we're waiting to find out what the rest are. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
And then if you could fill out a form, just to turn it in so we have a record of it. Anyone else would like to testify either as a supporter or proponent or opponent of this application? So I do have one question. I know the Lowries are, who's Mr. Pope?
I invite the applicant to provide further detail, but as far as I understand it, Donald Pope is a property, property owner in the Sun River Business Park District. So he's the property owner of their preferred location.
Oh, okay. Looks like we have no further, what's that?
Yeah. Next up, I will have one question for the applicant, just regarding traffic and analysis. Came up after your presentation.
So, okay.
If we're ready for that.
Yeah, so this will be a time then, and there's no other persons want to speak, the applicant can do rebuttal, and it sounds like we might have a question on that, so if you want to join us again, Mr. Blackmore.
So, just a little bit more detail about traffic analysis and the thought of this. So, I know that there's, has been discussion and some analysis of possibly making the, kind of the venture way, one-way road, and then dealing with the gas station and the school over there. Was there any traffic analysis done about number of trips or parking or timeframe?
For the text, we've, we've completed the, the, what's, it's a transportation planning rule analysis, and that's what needs to be documented for a text amendment. Transportation Planning Rule Analysis just focuses in on the new use, is the use provide fewer trips or result in fewer trips than other uses within the zone? Now, with a site-specific, you know, a new development or with a change-of-use, we'll, we will have to submit the necessary traffic report, which could be a traffic impact analysis depending on the number of trips. And then when you look at the traffic impact analysis, it's site-specific, it's saying this particular site with this number of, you know, of this, of a particular size and scale, and determining, does that impact any intersections? Does that result in any failing intersections?
It's the next step.
That would be the next step that would be reviewed.
I was literally in that question even, okay.
Yes.
Understood.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Daire or any?
No, I just wondered, do you have a number of how many children they want to take? I know this program is 18 spots?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
Forty-five.
Okay, that you can handle? Okay. All right, no, I mean, I know the community desperately needs it, so I was just wondering. That's great.
Okay, so it looks like we have no other testimony from anyone, so I guess we could have a motion to close the oral and possibly the written.
So, yeah, I support closing the oral and written record on this application.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? I'm in favor of that also, so, we'll have, I guess we'll vote on that, and then we'll discuss how we're going to deliberate. Okay, so, Commissioner DeBoise, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Daire?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. So that's the closure of the oral and written testimony on this. So next would be the issue of deliberations, and I understand that we can deliberate today if we want and come to a decision. We wouldn't, and then we could also adopt by emergency order if that was what we wanted to do, is that correct?
I believe the, the ordinance before you has the emergency language, I believe it was incorporated in that to reflect the appeal period of Luba.
So, I'm in favor of the emergency ordinance, I guess, to get this going, because I, I see the, you know, immediate need and the apparently potential to do this right away, so that's, that's great. I do wish there was something else we could call these, because emergencies kind of overused as a, in all these hearings. I don't know if, if that's something that's required, is the way we have to always call it when we're, the normal thing would be a 90-day appeal period, and this, this allows an appeal of this decision for 30 days, is that correct, or 21?
Twenty-one, the, you know, the, the overlay of the Luba process provides a 21-day appeal period. General county law ordinances typically had the 90-day window before they became effective. I think a large part of that was communication was a lot different 100 years ago. It doesn't even reflect the fact that most county actions, if you're going to challenge, you have a 60-day window through a writ of review, so the 90 days doesn't even make sense for general county ordinances.
So, along those lines, we do have Section 3 in the proposed ordinance, and I'll read it. "This ordinance being necessary to address a need for childcare in Deschutes County and for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare, and emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance becomes effective 21 days after, from adoption." So that 21 days was discussed in the work session as a proposed, and I do support that 21 days. I know that the preservation of public peace, health, safety, welfare is kind of the ORS required words, and I do thank staff for putting in the, you know, the words, "necessary to address the need for childcare in Deschutes County." So that's really the definition of why at this point.
Yeah. So, so I'm supportive of the ordinance in terms of deliberation, would be seeking approval today. I, I do raise that question about size, because I'm not quite sure why the Business Park has other limitations on size of operations, and 45 kids is a lot of kids, I think, and so I, I think I know where this facility is going to be, but it doesn't seem like anyone else has raised that, so I'm not going to, I don't know if it's a legitimate concern or not, but I do, I do know it's very busy right there. I'm very familiar with that gas station, I'm building houses in Caldera and being in there, and then, and the schools right there, and it's, it's a busy place generally right there. If, if I understand that the actual location's right across from the gas station, what was the, the pharmacy or was, yeah, so, aware of that.
So, kind of the big picture history as I know it, I've supported companies in there previously to being a commissioner in my previous jobs. I do know that, you know, there is auto repair, there's professional service buildings, there, there is the, the brewing there, post office, the hardware store, you know, so there's, you know, and the intention is for employment lands, you know, there's a destination resort, and there's a lot of residential co-located in that area, and this is just that little block of an area for employment lands. So, as I say, the application fits very well in here. There, there aren't high-intensity industrial uses that have evolved over time, you know, and if that would have taken off in the past, you know, if they were, you know, clanging of metal manufacturing and smokestacks there, this might not be the right zone for that. But, you know, in the last 20, 30, 40 years of evolution, this... But, you know, in the last 20, 30, 40 years of evolution, this looks like it's a great fit for that zone.
Lots of employees and, you know, ease of access and coming and going and kind of centralized in that area.
And the school.
Yep.
And the library.
Yes. No, I feel like they've done an excellent job. They've studied the need, and they're definitely putting a need where the county needs it. So I think it's, emergency is really a good way to go for them, especially with that new funding that came through the federal government.
So look for a motion in support of passage of ordinance number 2019.
So I think this is that situation where we get into the first and second reading of a proposed ordinance, the number 2019-002.
We'll do all of that.
By title only.
Okay.
And emergent, declaring an emergency. And I'm, that's my motion.
Are we doing this right?
Yes.
Okay, we did this last night with the, so we've been through this.
We should know, right? And I'll second it.
So, okay, so you're making a motion for the first and second reading of ordinance number 2019-002. Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So this will be the time for the first reading of ordinance 2019-002, an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, Chapter 18, dot 108, dot 110, to permit childcare, nurseries, preschools in Sun River Business Park Zone and declaring an emergency. This is also time for the second reading of ordinance number 2019-002, an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 18, Chapter 18, dot 108, dot 110, to permit childcare, nurseries and preschools in the Sun River Business Park Zone and declaring emergency. So having completed the both readings, now seeking a motion for, I guess, approval of the ordinance itself.
I move to approval of the ordinance number 2019-002. Do you want me to read the rest?
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
And I'll second it, supporting the emergency clause.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes.
Further discussion? Tom, any comments?
Just one comment I'd make, it was mentioned earlier regarding the, the traffic study that's been going on in the Sun River Business Park and the proposal for one-way traffic. It's my understanding that that is more or less on hiatus now, that there was, unable to reach consensus. It hasn't wrapped up, but doesn't really pertain to the, the change in the zone in front of us today, but just wanted to clarify that for the statements that were made earlier. And I've made a note to ask our road department director to provide a more formal update to the board on that.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Yeah, I wasn't aware of that at all when we got it started, that they were trying to solve some things, so good to have her, have a update on that.
And it just popped in my mind at the time, thinking, oh, there has been discussion about the flow in that area, yeah.
Well, it's a big, yeah, it was a big discussion just a year ago, in terms of one-way versus both ways. Okay, with no other discussion, we'll vote on this. Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for the efforts.
Forty-five screaming kids. We'll see.
Forty-five happy, content kids.
I don't know, my, my sister-in-law is a daycare, and I don't think she'd, she'd always qualify it as that.
Oh, yeah.
Don't we have to convene now?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Two other items on the agenda for today, we'll adjourn, unless there's any other items, we adjourn as Deschutes County Board of Commissioners and reconvene as the Black Butte Ranch Service District. Is that correct? Okay.
Governing body for that.
Governing body for the Deschutes, the Black Butte Service District.
Ranch.
Ranch Service District, sorry. Okay, so the first issue there is a consideration of board signature, letters appointing Roseberry Norton and Nora Ellison to the Black Butte Ranch Service District Budget Committee.
So moved.
Do I need to second it?
Yes.
Second?
Movement seconded. Any further discussion? So Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Second item is consideration of board signature on letters thanking Rich Elliott and Dave Doherty for service on the Black Butte Ranch Service District Budget Committee.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion?
Nope.
Like to thank them for their service. Okay, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. I guess we would have other items. We can reconvene as the Board of Commissioners for Deschutes County. Is there any other items before us? Okay, so seeing none, we'll adjourn our morning business meeting. Thank you.